All righty. What do you think we got, lady? I guess we'll just open them.
We don't have a quorum yet. You want me to announce that?
Yeah, I guess we should put something on the record, huh?
Just so everybody that's in the room and watching, we're waiting for one more assembly person to call in to have a quorum. I do believe we have Assemblymember Sumner online already, do we? Assemblymember Sumner, are you on the phone?
Yount is here.
Oh, I guess we're waiting for Sumner. Okay, I will go give him a call. Thank you.
Good, 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 good.
I need to get another member online. I need to get another member online.
At 6:04, 6:05. And this is a regular meeting for Tuesday, January 18, 2022. And Madam Clerk, would you call a roll, please?
I will. Tim Hale may be joining us later this evening. Stephanie Nowers.
Here.
Dee McKee will not be present. Robert Yount.
Here.
Moki Two.
Here.
Jesse Sumner.
Here.
And then Ron Bernier is getting ready to call in. You do have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any items that any member would like to pull from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. The, and if I move too fast, Madam Clerk, just.
You keep going.
Okay. Hearing none, the agenda is approved as presented. Will you all stand? And Assemblyperson Two, would you lead us in the pledge? Go ahead, Moki. Will you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is the minutes of two preceding meetings, special meeting on the Fourth of January, 2022, and a regular meeting on January 4, 2022. Are there any changes to the minutes as they were presented? Okay, hearing none. The minutes were approved as presented. The next items that we have is agency reports. I don't see any members from the city. Okay. And the Matsui School Board District, huh? No? Okay. And I don't see Todd for the State of Alaska. And we haven't had any joint Assembly School Board meetings or anything, right? And are there any public relations reports? Okay, none. So, Mr. Brown, we are ready for you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got two quick updates, and then we'll invite a couple folks up for larger updates or presentations. So first, I want to begin by saying thanks to the Borough's Animal Care and Regulation, our animal shelter. They had a Betty White Out Challenge event, and it surpassed all our expectations. So in honor of the late, much beloved Betty White, a true champion of animals and shelters nationwide, Animal Care challenged the Borough community to empty our shelter of adoptable animals, and our residents rose to the occasion. Our staff arrived this past Saturday morning early to find folks camped out in lawn chairs outside the facility waiting to adopt on a first-come, first-served basis. The public were treated to hot dogs and sodas and provided with adoption information while they waited for entry. The event was an all-hands-on-deck endeavor with our shelter staff, officers, and volunteers all pitching in to make it happen. Our staff and volunteers worked nonstop to show animals, answer questions, and facilitate adoptions. We adopted out 82 of our 103 adoptable animals. That is a new record for the shelter. So the team worked hard all weekend, but it was really the community that made this a true success by providing forever homes for these animals. We would like to thank everyone for their participation, and we are truly grateful to live here and serve this community. So special thanks to Jamie Kennedy, our Shelter Manager, for taking the initiative and developing a great plan, and it really was a great team effort overall. So that's a remarkable outcome, and I think really, I've seen lately the shelter really step up its game in communicating and doing community outreach, and I really appreciate that. I think they've been doing a great job down there. So on a less fun and light note, a quick update on the windstorm. I just wanted to follow up. We went back to the National Weather Service, asked them to do a recap of what actually happened, because we always talk about these forecasts, but sometimes you kind of need to go back and capture what actually happened. So I just wanted to give you two quick highlights from that National Weather Service report. Of course, the longevity and extremes that we recorded during the event were really what kind of caused the problems that we're seeing. So first of all, the strongest winds recorded were at the Palmer Airport with a peak wind gust of 88 miles an hour and a gust to 91 miles an hour at the Glen Parks Highway interchange, both on January 2. This rivals the strongest gust reached at the Palmer Airport since recording began in 1972, becoming the fifth strongest wind gust recorded at the Palmer Airport. The Wasilla Airport peaked at 74. So secondly, and I mentioned this already, the longevity of the event was obviously pretty pronounced. Not only were there about 40 hours of hurricane-force winds, which is 74 miles per hour or greater noted at the Palmer Airport, which is certainly extreme, but there were about 51 hours of wind gusts that were 50 miles an hour or greater between January 1 and 3. So taking a regional perspective and including Anchorage in the picture, this wind event ranks fifth for longevity since records began. And this is, though, this is likely the strongest wind event associated with a bore windstorm for Palmer on record. So it is kind of helpful to kind of go back and look and see, you know, what we were forecasting and seeing, we were getting in tidbits. But now that we have the hindsight and look back, it kind of puts things into perspective a little bit and helps us kind of understand the extent of the recovery and what we're going to be going through over the next couple of months. Right now, we have over 900 individual assistance applications that have been filed with the State of Alaska, and we continue to advance and encourage businesses to report so that we can work on communicating that information to the state for potentially a Small Business Administration disaster declaration. And of course, we're continuing to work with the cities, the school district, and Borough to collect all the public assistance claims that need to be captured for this event as well. So those are two quick highlights. Next, I'm going to invite Carrie Quaid up from Arctic Winter Games Host Society. We had talked about, she's the general manager there. And we wanted to do quarterly touchpoints with the Assembly so that there's an opportunity for short updates that are not overwhelming or overly involved, but it also creates an opportunity for the Assembly to be able to ask questions. If you have things you're interested in as the Host Society advances our efforts to host the 2024 Games. With that said, I'll turn it over to Ms. Quaid.
I can interrupt for just a minute, please. Let the record show that Assemblyperson Ron Berrier joined via phone at 6:08.
Thank you. Thank you, Manager Mike Brown. And good evening, Mayor DeVries and Assemblymembers. Thank you for having me here. It's my first opportunity to give you what will be a quarterly report of the progress and updates that we're making at the Arctic Winter Games, in the Arctic Winter Games Host Society. March 2022, which is a short time from now, will mark our two-year kickoff for our Games in 2024. The dates have been selected, and they will start, the Games' opening ceremonies will start on March 10 and run through March 17 of 2024, with setup on March 9 and 10 and strike on March 18. The Matsui Borough School District was instrumental in securing these dates and the additional dates needed to execute a successful transition to Athlete Village Sporting and Cultural Venues and the return to Classroom Ready for students to return after spring break. We are excited to welcome the Arctic Winter Games International Committee at the end of January, just a short time from now, January 27 to 29. Three members will be joining us, two from the International Committee, who reside here locally in Alaska, and the Chefta Mission from Team Alaska will also be joining us in person, as well as four members from the Arctic Winter Games International Committee joining us virtually from Canada. There will be a ceremonial signing of the agreement between the Matsui Borough, the Host Society, and the International Committee here in these Assembly chambers on Friday at 9:00 a.m. on the 28th. We received three RFPs for logo branding and website development. We're really excited to get our public-facing collateral for print and digital out into the world. We anticipate a March-April website launch, and we are looking forward to choosing one of the three RFPs for our partner in creating this public-facing collateral. Our social media is up and running. You can find us on Facebook at 2024 Arctic Winter Games and on Instagram. I'm still getting my TikTok legs under me. Sponsorship and fundraising. I am currently not only your general manager for the Arctic Winter Games, I am also your sponsorship and fundraising chair. A corporate sponsorship program is in development alongside a community-based fundraising strategy. Grant opportunities are also being explored, and there will be a sponsorship deck and document forthcoming that will feature our branding elements. The targeted overall goal to produce the Arctic Winter Games is $6 million. I think we have a very good strategy in reaching that, but we're looking forward to kicking this portion off as well. We do have an annual report from our first year, 2021, forthcoming as well. So you'll be receiving that, too. I'd open the floor to any questions. I know I just gave you a lot of information.
It is. Yes.
Thank you, Chief Mayor. So exciting. Glad to see it moving forward. With donations, is the Games like a nonprofit? If you donate to that, is it any sort of tax rate off for folks?
It is a nonprofit Host Society organization. There is some funding that has been granted from the Borough, as well as the state, as well as some funds that were received from the previous Games and Fairbanks that were a sort of legacy to the next Games in Alaska. So, and yes, nonprofit status for donations.
Okay, so companies are interested in donating, they can use it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from Assemblymembers? Well, you did excellent.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to seeing you next quarter.
We'll see you on Friday.
And for the record, I think the Clerk's Office did advertise, so it will be a public venue for that ceremonial signing on Friday, and I believe there's a mixer on Thursday. So the Assembly is welcome to attend that as well. Moving on, I'm going to invite our Borough Assessor and our Finance Director up to the podium. So as we prepare to go into the budget process, the first kind of few steps that we have, I mean, our assessment notices go out next week. That tends to generate phone calls to Assemblymembers sometimes. So this is intended to be an update for the Assembly, and I know the member's online. We have this document for you for your reference. It's obviously posted online, but we can also push that out to you via email. But to give you an overview of what we're seeing with regards to assessments and appraisal values across the Borough so that you have some sense for what to expect when those assessment notices go out next week. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Buddy Evelyn, and he'll walk you through the report. If you have questions, feel free to ask those as we go along.
All right, I'm Buddy Evelyn, Borough Assessor. And, uh, slide here. Yeah. Where does it need to point to? Okay. Thanks. So this just gives the dates. So notices will be mailed out the 26th, so the appeal period will start on the 27th of January. It runs through the 25th of February for the 30 days of the informal appeal period. And then the formal appeal period will be after that if there's a formal appeal filed. And then June 1, of course, is the certification of the roll. And then this slide here just kind of shows the parcels and improvements. So there's 81, a little over 81,000 parcels in the Borough now, with 40-some thousand of them there assessed as residential and then commercial and multifamily. This shows appraised value, which is the total assessed value, which is at the top there for a total appraised value. And then that'll be the value that's the total without exemptions. And then the appraised value, which is the assessed value, is the taxable value. And there's still some exemptions and deferments, LHTCs that haven't been deducted from that yet currently for this year. So then this shows appraised versus taxable over time. This is a pie chart of all the exemptions. So it kind of shows how much of it's Borough, public, and goes for disabled veterans and senior citizens. So it's just a breakdown of all that. So it comes out to about $3 billion, almost $4 billion worth of exemptions in the Borough. This is new construction by value. So the orange, or the yellow's commercial, and the orange is multifamily. And then most of the makeup in the Borough is residential structures. This just gives a count of new construction this year. We've got 32 new commercial, 560 new homes. And then the multifamily is 44, I believe, this year. And the average cost of a, the average cost of a residential house in the Borough has moved up to $320,000 this year. So it's taken quite an increase in the market. And then these are the last year's stats for the appeal process. So residential houses have gone up on an average of about 13.3% this year. So it was probably the biggest increase we've seen since at least 2006. And that's based off in sales that we reviewed. Cabins moved up 5% about, and then multifamilies went up about 10%. I guess that's about all I have.
Assemblymembers. You do? Okay. Assemblyperson Nowers, go ahead.
So that the appraised value increase overall is almost 12%. So when we, and last year we were at 7%, is that correct?
Yes.
And so, and then with the exemptions, are we going to land again about 10%? Where would we land with the overall increase with the exemptions?
Yeah. Through the mayor to the similar member Nowers. That is the question. Next week, I will actually do the calculation to determine where we come in for the actual taxable value. We still know, we still have senior citizen exemptions and disabled vet exemptions that can be filed. We have other exemptions that need to come in, and we also have farm deferments that don't have to be until May. So we will take that into consideration when we do the calculation. We also know there may be some adjustments that need to be made after the certified rule for damages that people incurred because of the wind disaster. It is one of those qualified events that will cause a abatement for their property taxes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, the, I guess I just watched that exemption on the residential level that we're looking at almost 20% of our value of residential is exempt. And then that, you know, average, what'd you say? The average home is like 13% increase? That's, that's a stunning increase. It's going to have a big impact on the property tax amount that folks are paying, for sure. Positive, but then you've got that negative, too. I guess that's the main question. That's just a stunning increase. And just always curious to look at the single-family, multifamily, and commercial, like in terms of what's happened with commercial, just kind of seeing a trend there that we haven't really hit since 2014. That we, it's kind of interesting. I don't know if there's any thoughts on why we're not seeing the commercial along with the residential in the Valley. I know that's not an assessor question, so I won't put you on the spot, but if there is any insight you have on that.
I think a lot of our commercials are still suffering due to COVID, so they probably aren't sticking as much out there. I don't know what the long-term are. We've seen a little more medical, some credit unions pop up, body shop, but we really haven't seen a lot of big commercial stuff show up lately.
Thank you.
Yeah, so to, if I could, through the mayor to Ms. Nowers, and really to the Assembly as a whole, like that was exactly my takeaway, too. 13% for residential is stunning. So I want to clarify, because I think as these assessment notices go out, it's likely folks are going to take notice, right? So it's important to understand there is an appeal period, and it's important that people take advantage of the appeal period. So, because we want to make sure the inventory that we have on record is correct, and if there are any errors in the record for that account, we need to know that. So I want to highlight that if you do get, well, I suspect you will get phone calls, that that appeal period expires February 25. So please, like step one is to contact the Assessor's office. So I want to kind of highlight that. And, but I also want to clarify, when we talk about the taxes that people actually pay, that will be determined by the Assembly. So we're sharing with you the first part of the calculation, which is the assessed value. The actual mill rate against that assessed or appraised value, that is up for discussion. We won't know what that outcome is until May, when we've gone through the budget process. What I can tell you is it will inform what we propose to you. And this year, we'll make sure we put emphasis on calculating revenues and not giving you percentage changes on rates and past value. Like, in other words, we'll run the calculations to propose a budget that has an offset and revenues that are consistent with what we think is sustainable. I hope I said that well enough. So we recognize that. But I think one of the things, folks are going to see those assessment notices and go on, my taxes are going to go up, let's say, on average, 13%. I don't see that being the case. Of course, I'm not the decision-making authority on that, but I suspect no one's going to be advocating for a mill rate that would actually see taxes go up by 13%. So I think that's an important thing for folks to understand is it's a part of the equation. The lever the Assembly has is to establish the mill rate that then finishes the calculation and actually determines the revenues and the taxes that would be collected. Is that fair? So that's a really important piece, because I suspect there are a lot of folks out in the public that don't necessarily understand all of that. It is complicated. What we need folks to do now is look at that. If they have an issue, file an appeal, go through the process. There's 30 days to do that, and we will continue to advance these calculations and projections. Our next big step after the assessment notices.
Good job, Ben. Our next big step is to give the school district their amount that's going to be transferred from the Borough. That, by code, is February 1. Like I said, I will be doing that calculation this week, coming week, to figure out where, or my best estimate as to where that final assessed valuation will end up. Again, they're always going to get 6.3 mills. They're going to get 6.3 mills of whatever increase in assessed valuation there is. After we give them their numbers, then, of course, we will continue working with the departments for their budget input, and then we will go through, I'm thinking, a number of scenarios between the manager and myself to figure out where that mill rate is going to come in.
Further comments or questions from any of the Assemblymembers? Anyone online? I don't want to hurry through this in case you're, no. I'm going to miss it. Okay. So I guess that's it, then. Thank you, folks. You did good for your first time, buddy. Okay. So then, do you have anything else? Okay. Any questions on the Borough Manager's Report then from Assemblymembers?
Just, I know you said there's 900 individual assistance applications that have gone to the state. I just wondered if you had any idea how many have used the Borough Portal for reporting damage?
Through the mayor to Ms. Nowers. I don't know that off the top of my head, but I think we could follow up with the number of those public assistance claims that came through the Borough Portal. We could throw that in the Weekly Post tomorrow.
Okay. Any other questions of the borough manager? Okay. Now we'll move on to Mr. Attorney. You have a report.
Briefly, as I've been reporting on all the meetings, redistricting lawsuit is moving forward. I know that executive session has been put on, but there hasn't been a need to really discuss anything in executive session. The trial is due to start Friday. Trial is happening by affidavit, as I mentioned previously, which means everybody just submits their testimony in writing. And then witnesses show up basically to be cross examined. There's been tens of thousands of pages of discovery. There's been motion work. There's been some fights. If anybody has questions about any of those details, please come and see me. By court rule, the trial court opinion is supposed to be issued by February 1st. The Supreme Court relaxed that deadline to February 15th. But either way, sometime in between that time period where we will be expecting a decision. That's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Any questions from any of the assembly members? Okay, Madam Clerk.
The clerk's report is in your red folders with the upcoming meeting schedule and also Saturday's agenda. So just a reminder with that, the meeting starts at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, Saturday at the Menard Center.
Okay, any questions? No? Okay. The next items are the citizens and the other correspondents. Are there any comments on any of these matters that were included? Okay, hearing none, they are presented. Madam Clerk, would you read the IMs into the record, please?
I will. IM 22017, reporting of conclusion of contract for bid number 22011B with Granite Construction Company for the central landfill paving improvements. And IM 22022, reporting manager waivers of formal bidding procedures in accordance with MSB 3.08320B for December 2021.
Are there any comments on the IMs from the assembly? Hearing none, the IMs are presented. Persons to be heard. We do not have anybody registered for that. The next item is public hearing. Madam Clerk, would you read the legislation, please?
I will. Ordinance 22009, an ordinance accepting and appropriating a portion of the 2018 Cook Inlet earthquake disaster relief monies in the amount of $18,371,035.57 from the, and $13,778,276.68 from the Federal Emergency Management and $4,592,758.89 from the Alaska State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for the Houston middle school rebuild and reappropriating $11,900,000 back to the school district to the school site selection reserves and $1,500,000 to the Houston junior senior high school repairs project from the Houston middle school rebuild project with accompanying resolution 22005, a resolution approving the scope of work amended budget for the Houston middle school rebuild and the scope of work and budget for the Houston junior senior high school repairs. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Is there a staff report? All righty.
Hello. Through the mayor to the assembly, Cheyenne Hind, the finance director. This legislation, as you can tell by the title, is, does a lot. Not only are we accepting and appropriating the final numbers, or the final amounts from FEMA, we are also replacing and returning the school districts $11.9 million that they forward funded us so we can begin this project and hopefully have a school done on time. The other thing we are doing with this legislation is we've set the scope of work for the whole project as a total. We are also setting aside $1.5 million in another project to reset the existing building with the additional students in it. It has suffered additional wear and tear and we would like to be able to update it so we get more use out of it in the future.
Okay. Any questions to the staff? No? All ready? Thank you. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone, let's see, do we have a sign? We do not have anybody signed up, but that doesn't proclude you from testifying if you would like to. You're welcome to come and testify. And the testimony on this will just be on ordinance 22-009 and resolution 22-005. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the assembly on these two pieces of legislation? Okay. Caleb, do we have anybody online, sir? No, nobody online. So I'll give the people present here one last chance if anybody would like to present testimony. Okay. So hearing nothing, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, assembly person hours.
I would move for adoption of OR 22-009. And the company resolution.
22005.
22005, thank you.
Is there any discussion? Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, the legislation passes. The next item is audience participation. Anyone in the audience is welcome to address the assembly on any matter. Doesn't have to be an agenda item. It could be any matter. And so I'll open audience participation. Anyone is welcome to come forth and address the assembly on any matter. So windstorm just blown out all of our, we're also sort of numb from the windstorm, waiting for the wind to pick up or something. And it's like, don't breathe too hard or something here. Do we have anybody? We have two people online already. So those online, go ahead.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Ann Kilkeny, K.I.L., K.E.N.N.Y. I'd like to speak to, and I'm not certain if this is the right time. And if it isn't, I will wait and come back every time. I'd like to speak to the motion to amend something previously adopted. The ordinance amending the compensation for the mayor. I am flattered, gassed. The people that I voted for that call themselves conservatives are thinking of more than doubling the mayor's salary. I think he was doing this without having budgeted for it. And that the mayor herself has not recused herself from this part of the meeting. If you're going to do this, I think the date should be amended to after the next election. The budget should be amended first and the mayor should be recusing herself from the meeting from this part of the, of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another person to be heard. Okay, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Deanne Wodruff, and that's W-O-O-D-R-U-F-F. And I would like to speak also to the reconsideration of ordinance number 21040, compensation for the mayor. It appears to me that some of you might only be considering changing the effective date of this ordinance in order to avoid providing additional compensation to the previous mayor for his excellent work on our behalf, while providing the recently elected ceremonial mayor and all future mayors with more than double salary with the same benefits for the same position. I would ask that you postpone this at bare minimum until after the next budget session. This extra large increase appears to be a step toward changing our borough government from a ceremonial mayor to a strong mayor form, and that is not something the borough voters have voted to do. There's a sentence in IM 21077 that reads, "To date, the assembly has not set any expectations about memorial involvement in community outreach and economic development." I don't know of any private business that would more than double a salary without some very clear expectations and some money to measure results on that. And so in this case, that is definitely not, not been done. And I think we need to have a discussion about that that involves the general public before we just throw more money in without any idea what we're going to get for that. Certainly, that's not a conservative kind of thing. The other thing that I note is that the previous mayor, I thought, did a really great job. And he certainly has a good idea of what it actually takes to do the work and suggested a $50,000 number. Now I see that somebody else had tried to get him $70,000 or tried to put that in the budget earlier on. And the commission on monuments has said not more than 65. And I see that you dropped it to that, but really I think 50 is about right for now until you've decided what exactly you want this person to do. There's really no requirement that the mayor that we elect does any of those things. Typically, they have done at least some of those activities. But we also have support staff. And I don't see us cutting back on the support staff who are usually doing those things for us at this time. So what did we cut to come up with this extra cash for the mayor? And why are the people that we already have on staff not still doing that? And do we really need this? I don't see that decrease in professional staff funding or anything else in the budget that tells me why we're doing this at this point. I'd like to know how many members of the public that you guys talked to that have said that they're really excited about changing the ceremonial mayor to a professional position. I'll just wrap up by saying I too was disappointed to find that this mayor did not recuse herself properly and leave the room, so as not to affect discussion when this was brought up earlier and apparently has not done so now. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone, I'll come back once to the public here. Does anybody want to present testimony to the assembly on any matter?
Thank you. My name is Jackie Ivy Goforth, as in go forth. And I want to speak for a moment about the Matsu Regional Hospital. I don't know if you've read the CARES Act yet. But I think you should know that there's a bounty being put on COVID. And I think the easiest way to do this is to let a doctor speak to you. His name is Peterson Pierre. He's with the frontline and maybe, maybe he can explain it better than I can.
Hello, fact finders and truth seekers. This is Dr. Peterson Pierre with America's Frontline Doctors, bringing you today's frontline flash. So the current situation is this. If you have COVID and you end up in the hospital, you're put on a rigid protocol and there is high mortality rate in the hospital and your family is kept in the dark as to what's happening. So what's going on here? Number one, the CARES Act is providing bonus payments to hospitals whenever you have a diagnosis of COVID. And then number two, the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services is waiving patient rights. This is a deadly combination. So here's what happens. You get a payment because you offer a free COVID test in the emergency room. You get a boost payment if you have a diagnosis of COVID. Number three, you get another bonus payment if you are admitted with COVID. Number four, you get another bonus payment if you're put on remdesivir. Number five, another bonus payment if you're put on a mechanical ventilator. Number six, another 20% bonus if the diagnosis on your death certificate says COVID, even though you may not have died from COVID. And then number seven, there's bonus payments to coroners. Do you understand the gravity of what's happening right now? The Biden administration is literally paying hospitals to kill you. That's what's happening. This is terrible.
Now I looked up the CARES Act because I don't take anything at face value. And what I found was hospital payments include, this is strictly from the CARES Act, a free required PCR test in the emergency room, an added bonus payment for each positive COVID-19 diagnosis, another bonus for COVID-19 admission to the hospital, a 20% boost payment from Medicare on the entire hospital bill for use of remdesivir instead of any other medication, another and larger bonus payment to the hospital if a COVID-19 patient is medically ventilated, more money to the hospital if the cause of death is listed as COVID-19, even if the patient did not die directly of COVID. And a COVID-19 diagnosis also provides extra payments to coroners. Now I belong to a very small patriot group and I happen to, I will tell you that seven, seven patriots in this valley passed away in the hospital in October by being put on remdesivir and a ventilator. The only reason I'm standing here is because I did not go in. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Anyone else? Would like to address the assembly on any matter? Do we have anybody else online, Caleb? No? Okay. So I will now go ahead and close audience participation. We are on the consent agenda. Does the assembly have anything to pull? Okay, we don't here. So Madam Clerk, would you read it into the record, the consent agenda, please?
Resolution 2210, a resolution directing the manager to initiate a competitive sale to facilitate the disposal of the Port McKenzie conveyor system. And IM 22001, request to vacate the 60-foot wide right-of-way of North House Circle dedicated by A, excuse me, ASLS 7226, plat number 86163, located within the northwest quarter, northwest quarter, section 16, township 18 North, range 1 West, Seward Meridian.
Okay. Assembly person hours, you want to move the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as read into the record by the clerk.
Is there any objection? Okay, hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. There's no unfinished business. There are no vetoes. We are now at introductions. Madam Clerk, would you please read the introductions into the record?
Introduction for public hearing on February 1st is ordinance 22012 with the accompanying resolution 22008 and ordinance 22013 with the accompanying resolution 22009.
Okay. Assembly person hours, will you read, move the introductions?
I move to introduce the legislation as read into the record by the clerk and set the public hearings for February 1st, 2022.
Is there any objection? Or I mean, I'm sorry, any discussion? Any objection? Okay, hearing none, the legislation is introduced. The next item is our vacancy report. Assembly person hours, would you please move the vacancy report?
I move to confirm the mayor's recommendations as follows. Board of Ethics, Kimberly Swanson. Borough Area School Site Selection Committee, Dee McKee. Enhanced 911 Advisory Board, Christian Hartley. Local Emergency Planning Committee, Benjamin Ott. Harry Hillman, Daniel Payne. Planning Commission, Michael Rubio. Plating Board, Emmett LaFell. Transportation Advisory Board, Randy Durham II. Fairview RSA number 14, Brian Swanson.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the vacancy report? Okay. Any objections? Okay, hearing no objections, the vacancy report is approved. The next item is a motion to amend something previously adopted. Do you want to read it?
Sure. Ordinance 2140 and ordinance amending MSB 2.08060A, compensation for the mayor.
Okay. Assembly person two, would you like to make a motion to amend ordinance 21-940?
Yeah, I move to amend ordinance number 21-040.
Is there discussion?
With, huh? Which will, previous, which was previously adopted on January 4th as followed. Section 3, effective date by striking July 1, 2021, and inserting in its place upon adoption.
Okay. Is there discussion? Yes, assembly person hours.
I'd like to offer a secondary amendment that would put it into place on the start of the next fiscal year, July 1st, 2022.
Okay. Is there objection to that motion?
Just to clarify, if I could.
Okay.
So Assembly Member Nowers' motion is moving to strike 2020, let's see.
Strike upon adoption.
So changing upon adoption to changing it to July 1st, 2022.
And I can speak to it if I may.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to say for the record, there, there was no intent in, I don't think, any of the assembly to try to not benefit the previous mayor. This was just a, a obvious oversight. It's also no secret that I have not been, I'm not a fan of raising the mayor's salary. Not because I don't believe the mayor is worth every penny that she, she works for, but that it doesn't, it's not something a private but that it doesn't, it's not something a private business would do. We don't, we're not changing any obligations. It doesn't change who runs or how hard they work. But I also was on the losing side of that. So I'm not going to oppose moving this forward. I just think it's cleaner to start things in the fiscal year, so that's why I'm proposing switching it to July 1st, 2022.
Okay, is there further discussion from any of the Assembly?
Hi, Jack. I'm not a, not a mayor, if I might.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Hello? Um, yeah, so.
I'm sorry.
We, we did. Oh, this is Jesse Sumner. We, we did budget for, for the current fiscal year. So I, I guess my feeling is that if it does pass, I, I don't see really the reason to postpone it, other than just as a measure to not, you know, take a second, you know, it just seems like taking a second bite at the apple on this. I don't know that I necessarily would object to it, but the money is in the budget.
Any further Assemblyperson's comments?
Yeah, this is Assemblyman Yent.
Mm-hmm, go ahead, sir.
I, I too wanted to mention that we did have this in the budget before. I mean, we've, we've discussed this on multiple meetings. It came about, it's had plenty of opportunity for tons of public comment. I, I do think that there, there could be some edits and some changes made to the requirements, but I, it's been my experience in my short time here after watching the last mayor and the current, it's, it's, I mean, the, the board came up with the number for a reason. It's, um, you know, I, it, it seems like a full-time position to me. It does, you can work full-time even from a weak mayor's position. And, you know, earlier someone mentioned that the voters didn't want a strong mayor system. Well, I openly didn't want one either, nor a first-class government. Nor will I ever support either one of those type of governments in the Matt Sue Borough. But for that being said, I, I do think the compensation's fair, and it is in the budget. You know, whoever said that earlier was incorrect. So for that reason, I, I cannot support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion or comments from any of the Assemblymembers? Yes, Assemblymember Two? Oh, okay, sorry. All righty. So Clerk will have to do a roll call vote, and so go ahead, Madam Clerk. And now, this is just, this is just on the amendment to change the date from previously adopted to July 1st, 2022.
Assemblymember Nowers?
Yes.
Assemblymember Yent?
No.
Okay. The motion that's before the Assembly right now, your motion was to make the change to take effect upon adoption, which would have meant January 4th. This motion is putting that language back in that you took out with a starting date of July 1st, 2022. So it would take a first, it'd take effect July 1st, 2022.
I want my amendment to go through. So what is that?
You would vote no.
No.
Assemblymember Sumner?
No.
Mr. Bernier, are you on the phone? Do we still have three members? You have to press start?
No.
Oh, thank you.
No.
Thank you. And the amendment, the second, or the primary amendment has, or secondary amendment has failed.
Okay, so now we're back to the main motion that Assemblyperson Two moved. Is there further discussion on that? Okay, is there any objections? Okay, hearing no objections. Okay, so you objected to the Assemblyperson Two's amendment to go through?
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion then, sir?
Well, like I said, it was in the budget, and it was passed, and I, I was aware. I don't know that everybody wasn't aware. So, yeah.
So now, so, so I'm confused. Okay.
Just to be clear on where we're at, this is just striking the effective date of July 1st, 2021, because that's what, what it is right now, to changing upon adoption, which would make it effective as of January 4th, 2022, rather than July 1st, 2021. I just wanted to clarify that.
So is there objections? Oops, go ahead.
This is Assemblyman Yent. Mr. Sumner already objected, so I think we'll, I think comment will continue on. So if I may, I think what, I think what Jesse's trying to say is, we put this in the budget last year, and the idea that it wasn't adopted as of last July, we were waiting on the board, but, which I think, you know, again, was actually Mr. Sumner's idea, was to wait on the board, which was a very, very fair, you know, that was the right way to handle it on his behalf. But they spoke, and the money was in the budget, and I think what Mr. Sumner's saying is that he would like to see the date remain July of '21. And I've already expressed that to borough staff as well. I don't think it should move up until now. I think it should be, I understand we'd have to go back and pay the last mayor a little bit of money there for the end of his term, but I'm totally fine with that. I, I've seen how it already worked. It's a full-time job, like I said. It may not be a strong mayor's position, but it is a, it's a full-time commitment. You know, the board spoke. You're put in place for a reason, and so anyways, I, I too would like to see it left like it was before. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Assemblyperson Nowers?
I guess to me, 15, you're talking about backdating or backpaying Mayor Halter about, I'm guessing, about $15,000, and $15,000 is $15,000. And, you know, it's not a small chunk of change that couldn't go towards a worthy project in the Valley. And I know Mayor Halter didn't support having a raise. I just, I, again, was on the losing battle of this overall, but I don't, even if something's in the budget, the idea that we would pay somebody who's already job done just doesn't make fiscal conservative sense to me. So, you know, I've lost pushing it to the next fiscal year. The next best thing is to do this thing upon adoption, and I'm sure we could sign some for worthy places for that $15,000. I can think of a few.
Okay, further comments from other Assemblymembers?
I'd just like to agree with Stephanie.
Any further comments from any of the Assemblymembers? Okay, so Madam Clerk, go ahead and.
I'll do the roll call vote. Assemblymember Yent?
No.
Assemblymember Two?
Yes.
Assemblymember Sumner?
No.
Assemblymember Bernier?
Yes.
Assemblymember Nowers? It has failed, because the Assembly does need four votes to pass anything, so it does stay as, as of July 1st, 2021, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All righty, referrals, there's no referrals, right, Madam Clerk? And there are no reconsiderations? And as we heard from our attorney, unless he's changed his mind in the last half hour, there's, I don't know about the last 15 minutes, so, you know, you could have jumped a different side. So we have no executive session, so now we will go to Assembly comments. And so let me start online. Deputy Mayor Sumner, would you like to start? Do you have any comments, sir?
Oh, no, no, no comments. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm, and thank you for making every effort, all, everybody that's online as well as here tonight, thank you for making the efforts to be here. I know things are really going on in people's lives. Assemblyperson Yent, you have a comment, sir?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry that I didn't make these earlier. I was having, actually having a difficulty with my phone, but I wanted to take a minute and just say thank you so much to the school board for working with us on the Houston School. What an awesome display of teamwork that was. Recently, we had legislation brought forward where we, there was an attempt to lower the mill rate that goes to the schools from 6.3 to 60%. I was one of the four deciding votes to not allow that to happen, and I don't regret that. But these numbers that came forth this evening are very concerning to me with the amount of increase that we're going to see in taxes. And so I do, I do want to caution the, the school board, and I know they're, they're a good group of fiscal conservatives, you know, that I'm hoping that what they'll do is take the money that we're repaying them or giving back, I should say, from the Houston School, and put it into an account specific to help build the next school out of pocket. I don't want to see our next schools bonded. I hope that they don't either. I spoke openly about this multiple times in regard to our road package. I don't want to see us selling bonds for that either. And so I do hope that tomorrow at their school board meeting that they, they take some sort of action to set that money aside and prepare it to, again, build one of our next schools. And then, you know, I would like to see their financial director, finance director, Mr. Falk, I believe his name is, come and meet with Cheyenne before they start just drafting the budget based on these big gains. It, I, you know, again, moving forward, we'll have to actually see what the, what we do with the mill rate, but I just want to caution everybody to not start spending money that isn't already in the budget or that may not need to be spent. So that's all I have. Thank you. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you, and thank you for making the effort to be on. I know it's sometimes difficult, but I'm glad that you pressed forward. Assemblyperson Bernier, do you have comments, sir? Ron, he must be having some problems also with his, how he's calling in or whatever. I'll go ahead and go. Assemblyperson Two, do you have a comment? No comment? Assemblyperson Nowers, comment?
I just wonder if somebody's called former Mayor Halter and told him about his Christmas bonus that's coming from the borough. I, I just don't know in what book that's fiscally conservative. I don't get it. There's a lot of people in this building that work their buns off night and day, and nobody gets a, you know, if there's a performance bonus, I get that. If there's a job change, I get that. I don't understand just being in the position to, to hand out money like that. So I, I'm flabbergasted. But I did want to just, again, congratulate the animal shelter. What an amazing deal to get 80% of those animals out. I've been in there recently. The folks who do the volunteer work there and run that shelter are running, just the amazing amount of animals that come through there. And so I hope, I know they worked really hard this weekend. I hope they get a much-needed break, and it's, it's good to see all those animals find forever homes. I was watching an orange kitty, Taro, seven-month-old that was so cute, but it would hiss at people, and I thought, that one's not going to get adopted. And Taro, even Taro got adopted, so it's a pretty cool, cool story to tell.
You should have seen the fluffy white one today with the big blue eyes. You would have been tempted. I don't know, did, did it make out of there, Stefan, or not? No? Okay. We, we, I did a tour today of the animal shelter, as well as, the Ale House had a fundraiser for the animal shelter, and, and so they presented a check for $4,500 to us. So some of us were there for quite a long time, looking, trying to be tempted, but I think maybe we all resisted, right, Chris? So I don't have any other comments outside of that. Does Attorney Manager Clerk? All right, well, we missed the record, right? It's, yeah. But we made it through. So again, thank you, everybody. Good night. Meeting's adjourned.